Welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October 20th. It is 7:00 PM. Kami, can you call the roll, please?
President.
Present.
Here.
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 Yes, we are, we are starting the meeting now, so you'll only hear me, so we're going to go ahead to the Pledge of Allegiance now.
Okay, can I just ask a quick question? I'm trying to log in on WHCTV.org and it's not, it's not on yet, is that accurate?
It should be on now, I'm getting the, we're just double checking before we start the pledge.
Thank you. Yeah, still cycling, the little thing wheel is cycling.
We're checking. Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you, thank you.
We're streaming, are you on WHCTV.org?
Yes.
It could be an internet issue on your end?
Yeah, I'm trying it on two different computers. It's still a black screen with the little white circles going around the middle, but I can listen.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. Lily, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We do not have a revision to the agenda order, so we are going to move ahead to public communications. And as a reminder, board members do not respond to the comments provided by the public. Individuals who have signed up will be called first, and in the order in which they signed up. After we go through those who've signed up, if anybody else is on the call and would like to speak, you'll let me know. You'll have three minutes per individual, 21 minutes per topic matter. And the first person is Karen Sack. Karen, are you on? If not, we will move on to the next person, who is Marina Creed. Marina, are you on the call? If you are, you can hit star six if you were on mute before. If not, we'll move on to Wilmot Dennis.
Dennis, good evening.
Good evening.
So I was just, you know, kind of like joining just to hear more and just kind of, you know, sharing my own kind of concerns about the hybrid with the merger that I got the email from the school. Unfortunately, I don't receive emails from the office of superintendent, I'm not sure why. I would like to kind of receive that if that's possible. My concern is just the fact that, you know, the whole pandemic, you know, is still here, we're seeing some increase throughout our state. And now, we're told that there's going to be the merging of the two hybrid groups. And so, my worry or concern has been the classroom capacity now, I was told, you know, it's going to be 22 or more students. And so, it worries me because I'm not sure if it's six feet, you know, because I was told six feet is just what TBC recommends, but it's not required. And so, the school is telling me that the desks are going to be between four to five feet. And so, now, when these kids come in, and I mean, the district has done a great job in terms of like, you know, bringing them in on week one and week two with regards to less students in the class. And so, that's why I chose, you know, the hybrid style for like, week one, and then week two online. And I know other districts too have done two days, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, but we have done five days, which is great. Now, to see that these kids are coming back, you know, to full capacity, it troubles me, you know, to kind of like, no, one, the classroom is not, you know, fully spacious enough for that six feet or more that again is saying, and then from listening to some of these doctors and scientists who are saying the camaraderie of more people in a condensed place, it just, it troubles me, you know. And so, I know, again, we've been praying for the school people, principals, superintendent staff, our own children, our own community that things goes well. But, I'm appealing that if we can sort of like, keep the hybrid going for five days, week one, and then week two home, that'll be great. You have two kids, one in elementary, one in middle school.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to make comments this evening? Okay, we are going to move ahead then to unfinished business. We don't have any unfinished business. New business, no new business, and staff communications and reports, and we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thanks. Superintendent's report is the same as it is every day, this is one long COVID groundhog day. I'll talk a little bit about where we are with plans and his callers, and I've responded to a lot of people. Good emails, and I want people to understand that I don't take any email offering an opinion as oppositional, or as, this is, this is part of the dialogue that we need to have about where we are and where we should be. And we've known that if we're, when we announced we're going to be in hybrid, that there are people that are upset about us being in hybrid when we're going back, there are people that don't think we should be going back. I get it. I think one of the important things to note is that, I want to move it away from kind of a decision into more a reflection of the numbers and the recommendations of the state. And we're still in that place where we're not in a hot zone. The numbers last week ticked up, they switched to a two-week rolling average. Even with that two-week rolling average, Andy and I did the, because you can do the numbers by day, just looking at the governor's report from West Hartford, there was really a three-day stretch about 10 days ago that created a spike, and it was, you know, I know from discussing things with the health district, there was a couple of unique family situations, we had a cluster in one family that led to increased numbers. Basically, you want to stay between, to stay where we are, between five and nine cases a day would basically keep West Hartford, between four and nine, four and eight cases per day over a two-week average would keep us into that yellow zone, where, where we are right now, and where we're going tomorrow with our elementary students coming back, which is, I think, we need to remember that, that has been a stated goal from the beginning, to get elementary students back if the health metrics said they could, and we wanted to watch the beginning of the year to see how safe it was. While we've had cases at all levels, we have had zero spread across the levels. Masking is working, the mitigation strategies with our ventilation systems that we've spoken about is working. And yes, one of the mitigation strategies is smaller classes, that's, that's the whole essence of the hybrid. At what cost is that mitigation strategy is something we have to think about, the hours in school and kids coming together every day. So, that's certainly something that we weigh with the indicators, which we've put on our website, as people are familiar with now. But there's certain things that I think, that are the other reasons why we started in a hybrid, so we could learn from other places. The South started before we did, the American South, which there are some parallels for us. Area towns, smaller towns, started earlier than we did, and they've started coming back. I was on a call today with 28 area superintendents, their discussion was pretty clear that what they're seeing is basically what we have seen, that while there are cases, there's not spread in their schools. And a lot of them have class sizes that are actually far larger than our class size at the elementary level. That's the other thing I want to stress, is that our class sizes at the elementary level are basically 22 in a few cases and below. The average class size is into the teens. We say we can't guarantee six feet because we can't. We can guarantee, you know, as much space as we can get, but really at the elementary level, when we do contact tracing, at, at the high school and middle school level, because of movement, we would, if somebody's in quarantine, it has to do with their distance away for 15 minutes or more. Andy, school principals will go out and measure the desks and the locations people were before we send out notifications and as we assist the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District in contact tracing. Now, some of the things that people want as extra mitigation strategies, I get. The plastic stand-up trifolds that we got for our K-2 students, I want to remind people, we got those early on, and there's a lot of things we ordered in May, that if we had to go back now, we might say, okay, was that the best investment? We ordered those purely because we were afraid of masking with little kids, that everybody was telling us little kids masks won't stay on, so you want another mitigation strategy for these? Basically, we were wrong. The little kids have masked exceptionally well, and I really think that's the story as to keeping transmission down within our schools. We may, at some point, end up back in hybrid for the elementary, I wouldn't be surprised. There could be spikes so large, if we enter the red zone, we're looking at national average, we're looking at state averages, there could be bad news coming, it could be a bad winter, I accept that, I understand that. But we also have to look at West Hartford's numbers, and looking at it day by day. And West Hartford's test positivity rate is still under two, as of the, as of this past week's numbers, and when you track by this week. We look at the numbers on this Friday, this is something we're going to have to make rolling decisions. I want to give parents plenty of notice if anything's going to shift, that's why we try to roll things out, I think it's really important. But at the same time, I think we have to continue with a goal of getting as many kids in school every day as we can, and continuing to engage. At the November 4th meeting, we'll discuss kind of what hybrid 2.0 would look like at the secondary levels and how we shift, because the fact is, we see numbers rising, that's certainly true. At the high school, the pure number of students, there's not a school system our size that has that many students in at this high school level. So that's something we're looking at, how do we make it better? I'm not saying we won't be in person, I think, as I've said all along, I guarantee at this point, this year, at some point, we'll be in all, with all students, at some point, we'll be in hybrid, and there's a chance at some point we'll be in virtual, even if it's just for a very short time period. I think we're going to utilize all those strategies before the end of the year. So really, we're excited to have people back, but any first day comes with trepidation.
town or from the school district about how the kids should celebrate Halloween?
Yeah, I'm in calls on Wednesdays with the mayor and the town manager, and they're handling that with the governor's advice. And when they asked me about it, I basically was, you guys get to handle Halloween, thankfully. So there is, I know Andy's at Ed Sedgwick.
Sedgwick, 10 to 12 Saturday morning.
Sedgwick, 10 to 12 Saturday morning of the Halloween weekend. There's going to be a drive-through thing, which I think they're just beginning to be in the process of announcing. Flyers will be coming out. So there will be a lot from the town, and we'll partner with the town certainly in sharing that out with the community and with the other schools in our community, just so the town's message can be out there. I think everybody's kind of waiting what happens before anybody says, okay, this is exactly what we're doing on Halloween, to make sure we know where the numbers are at that point.
No catapults?
Amanda?
Thank you. Would you mind clarifying a bit more about the plans you're thinking for middle and high school? I know you touched upon it, but it was when the computer kicked in.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So middle and high school, our numbers, just by dint of being the ninth or 10th largest district in the state, puts us at significant numbers. And while we want to plan for a return, and we are still planning for a return, we're planning at the same time for Hybrid 2.0. And I don't want to go too far down the road because Paul's currently planning with, he had a meeting with the scheduling team today where we can increase class time for those students. And as we talked about during, I think, the last meeting, last presentation, getting increased class time, incorporating streaming more than we have, but still, I'll be honest, the sticking point is trying to find a way for that check-in for the kids that aren't physically present that week and trying to pair that with the streaming. So we've got a couple of things contractually that we have to look at, where we have to provide teachers X time here. We've got to make sure we can provide travel time for the people that are between middle and high school. During the day today, I can tell you, the day started with Andy, actually, last night, Andy and Paul met and put together a scenario. We talked for an hour about that today. Paul brought it back to the high school committee. They found a problem with it right away. He redesigned something else and sent it to me 20 minutes before the meeting, then came into my office to ask me what I thought of it, and I told them, get out of my office. So tomorrow morning at 10:00, we have another meeting about that. And so I would say on the November 5th, November 4th board meeting, before then, we'll communicate something out about what this will look like. But it kind of, it dovetails nicely with the following week being kind of the second quarter beginning for us to roll out differences then, whether it be if the numbers got really good and we could look towards in-person, great, or if we can look to how we're shifting our hybrid at secondary level. So I'd expect in the next meeting, we'll share more information on that.
Okay, thank you. And just one follow-up question. When will be, we be talking in more in-depth about the remote learning? Because I know there's people who have a lot of questions about that, and they understand tonight's, the community's mind is on bringing the little ones back tomorrow, and then knowing that you're still in the process of the Hybrid 2.0 for the other levels. But when can they expect to hear or to have a more robust discussion about how that's going?
We can do a presentation in November, probably the second meeting in November, talking about where we are, what we've learned, and how things are going and moving forward. So we can put that on the agenda.
I wanted to, well, I've been thinking about the emails that we get for the board and hearing other parental concerns about going full in-person tomorrow. And I'm wrestling with those concerns as well as, as well as hearing about other, about the degree of transmission in the community among adults. And so trying to pair all these things together, it made me kind of ask some questions about how, you know, how you build confidence in the procedures of the school and mitigation strategies. And it made me think of this basketball announcer, Jeff Van Gundy. He says, confidence is built on successful repetition. And so I feel like... ...trust in how the schools have handled this. And it made me return to the COVID-19 return to school protocol. And I really want to encourage everyone to read through this form because it really establishes the conditions, the safe conditions in which students can return back to, back to school. And, you know, I think that, so I wanted to ask you about how were these, these conditions built? And then also, what are the consequences for not following these guidelines? What are the consequences for not disclosing, you know, information about positive tests or things like that?
And I appreciate the question. The truth is, there's no consequences. There's no consequences on the state level for not following the guidelines. There's no consequences for not sharing information. I can tell you... 10 districts right now, because we have our commercial superintendents today that are sharing zero information on their sites and are not reporting cases to their communities. And they're, now, eventually they will because the state, every case we get, Andy sends in not just to our own website, but to the state. And the state at some point is going to release a dashboard by school. And the reason it came up is because there are districts in opposition to that. There are districts in the red zones that are in the red zone, which is where, if you're in the red zone, the recommendation is close to saying you should be virtual. There are some that are going virtual, and there are some that are still in all it. It's, that's what I want to avoid because what I was going to say is, that's a decision. This isn't my decision. This, like, I have to say that somebody has to make the decisions, but even that terminology we talked about last night, I, I want people mad at me for this, that's fine. I don't want it to filter to principals or anybody else. That's fine. I use those guidelines that are issued by the state and the Department of Public Health that we post publicly so everybody can see, so that it's not really a decision. I mean, there are things that go on that line of decision. Because if you're in a primary indicator of over 10 cases per 100,000, but your secondary indicators are at 1.4 as far as your test positivity, if you know you had one spike in one week on that Tuesday because a family of seven threw off your numbers, and this is certainly more true in a very small community where they could explain more, and West Hartford levels out, although we did have a couple of those situations, and you know, gosh, next week's numbers, because remember, those numbers that are published Thursday, Friday are lagging by four days. So if you have a strong supposition that the next Friday's numbers are going to be different, you don't want to go into that in and out. So you might say, we're in, we're looking closely, and next Friday, if these numbers are the same, we will be in hybrid. That kind of thing, there you're on a decision when you're cusp-y. We're not cusp-y right now. That's the thing. Our numbers have gone up. The numbers in the state continue to go up. The true number that tells you there's trouble out there is hospitalizations. Hospitalizations aren't based on testing or anything else. That's, this many people are sick enough to go, and that's doubled in the past three weeks. So we know there's an increase in the state, southeastern Connecticut, but again, Hartford's a red zone. That's right next to us. So those are the kind of things, that decision we have to make. But, for example, Hartford's wrestling with what to do. And I, I'm not critiquing anybody that makes a different decision. I'm saying I've chosen just to be upfront and kind of lay it out there that this is where we are, but there could be tweaks to that based on the primary, secondary, tertiary The, the one thing I don't want to lose that you talked about when, this is the, it goes back, and Ari spoke eloquently, like I said, about it last night. There's no punishments for doing the wrong thing in your house. You know what I mean? If you're, if you're doing the wrong things with a large group of people, you're at home, private residence, there's no punishment. But we got to move away from the notion of what's our punishment versus what's our responsibility to each other as human beings during this, and really using that one community to lift all of us up. So I hope that answered. Thanks.
Mine's not so much a question as it is just a follow-up to Tom. I'll stay off the...
Can I just ask you to bring your mic up?
Oh, sorry. I'll stay off the soapbox tonight. But I just think it's really important as a community, what we talked about last night at the PTC meeting is, you know, the mantra for the year is, sorry, one community, one year. And if we can look at it in a short term, I think it would just be helpful, you know, if we know, and what Tom and Andy are reporting to us, is that transmission and spread is not occurring in schools where all of those mitigation strategies have been thoughtfully put in place and are being implemented. So in my opinion, then, what we need to do is we need to look at the practices within our own community. And, you know, I've said this in other arenas, but I fully support it in this area as well is that, you know, as the parents and the adults in this community, we are really the role models and we set the tone for our children. So unfortunately, we are the ones that have to make the sacrifices and make the tough decisions for the good of our community, for the safety of our children. So, you know, if we're not picking those priorities correctly or acting responsibly on our level, it's hard for us to enforce that and have our children believe that that's the way, you know, that we should be addressing this pandemic. And what I've, you know, I've had very difficult decisions with people that are very close to me because I think as time has gone on, we have really kind of loosened our idea of social distancing, and I think that's why we are where we're at right now is because of those kind of, you know, fatigue, they call it, you know, COVID fatigue and the loosening of social distancing. And I really believe that's why we're kind of rising back to where we were. So what I've really been talking to my friends about and people at work is, you know, being able to really be honest with yourself and look in the mirror and say, am I part of the solution here or am I part of the problem? And if you can honestly tell yourself that, well, maybe I am part of the problem, then you just have to commit to doing better. You know, I think the idea with risk is, if we're increasing risk by allowing our children to go back to school, then we have to make sacrifices in other areas of our life. It doesn't open up other areas. If we want our kids back in school and education is the priority, then we have to give up other things for the betterment of our kids. So, all right, stepping down now.
And I think that the important thing for parents... And another important point for parents that we want to stress, we have those magnets out about whether, if your child feels ill, make sure they stay home. Please make sure of that. But if you have close family members that are ill, I know that it's probably nothing and it's probably this, but we really need to keep our kids home safe until you know, especially if you're waiting on a test result. That test will come in and we need to make sure we keep those kids home because that's, that's keeping everyone else safe. But it is certainly a sacrifice.
My colleague, well said. Thank you so much. And also the question you raised in terms of consequences. And I respectfully disagree with you saying that there is no consequence. I could see on a formal level, there's no consequence, but we certainly know there is the ultimate consequence if someone does not comply with the rules, and that is going to the grave to bury someone or being in the hospital because you know of someone who's ill or who's dying. And that's the ultimate consequence that all of us are responsible for. So even if you may be kind of cavalier with your own family and your own children, that's your choice. But please don't do that and have that level of irresponsibility and hold others accountable for that because there are other members who are dealing with the loss or those who are ill, or you have other households with children or persons themselves that have a pre-existing condition like asthma where they cannot sacrifice or be exposed to any type of condition that could put their health further at risk. So it's if you're choosing how you govern yourself and your household, but please be responsible for others. And we are a brother's keeper. It does take a village to raise a child, and this is something that we collectively are responsible for in the present and certainly to help us move forward in a productive and long-lived way. So I don't mean to get on a soapbox to preach, but this is a life or death matter, and we have to keep it real and we have to be accountable for one another.
Thank you. I actually have just one practical question for you. One of the concerns that's been raised about going back in full-time is lunchtime. Can you talk about what some of the options are in the elementary school classrooms for eating lunch?
Absolutely. You know, the vast majority of our classrooms, six-foot distancing is possible. I mean, our typical classes are sitting at 15, 16. But each building has a different alignment, obviously. So, you know, I have people that comment to me, and it's one of the nicest comments because it's always said with a smile, I hope people still keep eating lunches outside because I love when I go by the school and I see the kids out sitting outside and picnicking with each other. You know, I'm ignorant of it now because you get used to it, but that is a really nice thing, and those are the kind of things we should remember next year. We should use the outdoors more than we do on a regular basis. Those are the things that we should think about. There's also this feeling like, oh, well, the cafeteria, like, almost like the cafeteria's a bad place. Cafeteria's not a bad place, it's a really good place because it's bigger. So we can space people out more, we can use that cafeteria, and we can, you know, still keep your cohort together where the groups are further apart, but still use that. There are places we may choose to use the gym, and that's kind of why you have to be in to see the situation in front of you. There could be situations where, well, we can't use the cafeteria because music's using that. Well, music's not going to be able to use that then, and we have to make those shifts. So it's really, and that's why I can't say, and some people have asked, do you have a building, do you have a policy? We don't because it's building by building because there are some places where it's not a problem. You know, on a day like today, being outside, great. Tomorrow may be rainy, okay, so here are the in-school mitigations. And I will say, that is one thing about the outside and being outside. I'm hoping for a warm winter, but when it's 50 degrees out, you can be outside in a coat. A kid can be outside, they're going to be okay being outside in that weather. We have about takeaway rain, but if you base it on temperatures, we have about 10 days a year, if that, where we don't have outdoor recess, just based on a wind chill number, some years more, some years less. But those are the kind of things that hopefully we can understand because I've, you know, I think I brought it up last time because Paul's answer was perfect. Somebody said, what's your mitigation strategy for when it gets cold outside? And Paul sent a picture of a jacket because that's a mitigation strategy. So those are the kind of things that, those are some of the things that we're doing, utilizing the space we have in the building as much as we can. We're not using an art room, you know, for, because we're not going there. So is that space clear? It is in one building, so that's a good place. Is a foyer in a place possible? Yes, it is in some places, not in others. So these are all the things that are building by building decisions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We will move to staff reports and board discussions, and our report tonight will be on equity advancement. And so I'll invite Dr. Rosina Haskins and Dr. Scott Ratchford up to present.
The phone?
Hold on just one moment. I'm sorry, could you please repeat that on the phone?
I was looking to see if we have an opportunity to ask any questions.
Okay, so public comment is restricted to the beginning of the meeting and the end of the meeting. So if you want to hang tight, at the very end of the meeting, I will ask for public comment. That is, that's our board policy. So I'm going to keep the computer on mute, though, at this time.
He asked a question.
What's that?
I think he asked about asking questions.
This will be public... This'll be public comment.
So, good evening. Good evening, everyone. And I'm sorry to always have backs to you. Thank you Superintendent Moore and to the board for this opportunity to share with you and the viewing public an update about our district's equity work and our plan for educational equity and anti-racism. I'm going to remove my glasses because when they fog up, I can't see you. But I don't know if that makes a difference because without them, I can't see you. So I am pleased to have with me this evening at the board table, my colleague, Dr. Scott Ratchford. This summer, in the reorganization of our district's equity structures, Scott was repositioned to the Office of Equity Advancement. And he brings with him sharp skills, a depth of knowledge, and really collaborative dispositions that make him well-suited to be a thought and action partner in our office. So just as a matter of general housekeeping, WHCTV has made this available, made our PowerPoint presentation available, as normal, for our at-home viewing public and to board members here and my colleagues, you should have a hard copy. And so we'll signal either by slide numbers or headings as we advance through our presentation. So tonight, we will outline, on our second slide, we, it frames our presentation, and it begins with our vision for equity and anti-racism in ways that we are, we aim to be more intentional in our strategies and our practices for promoting student growth, for professional development for our educators, and more intentional in our efforts to strengthening our family and community partnerships in ways that really reach out and involve our families who have been traditionally underrepresented and underserved and, you know, largely not heard. And then finally, we'll outline our, the big-picture plan for continuous improvement and accountability. So before we move into this presentation content, I would like to open with a Native land acknowledgement, but I first would like to share why I would do that. Land acknowledgement and the opening of programs and events is one way that we seek to understand our place in history and honor the Indigenous peoples. Indigenous allyship is a large part of our work and our commitment. So it seems fitting to me to, in the context of our commitment to equity and anti-racism, to open with a Native land acknowledgement, which I will read to recognize and respect Indigenous peoples as our traditional stewards of the land that we occupy, right here. So we begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather here this evening is the ancestral homeland of the Tungses, Sikwags, Wapengers, and Wonguns. They are Native peoples who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We thank them for their strength and resilience in protecting this land and aspire to uphold our responsibilities according to their example. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we are very fortunate to learn from our co-founders of the Akamwa Educational Initiative here in Connecticut.
So in acknowledging all that we need to, there are some folks in the room we'd like to acknowledge. We begin our work knowing that we have champions who join us and who support us in the work of equity. I've worked in a number of districts, and it is no small matter to have a Board of Education and a superintendent who stand tall in matters of equity and that have made a firm statement and a commitment, a formal commitment to equity and anti-racism. So we wanted to acknowledge that as a place of beginning.
Okay, so when we make a commitment, we must have a mission and a shared vision for what this looks like. And so in building a vision, we've been asking all of our stakeholders to reflect on whether our community has established a set of clear expectations, practices, and accountability measures. A vision statement should help us all who are responsible for delivering on our promise toward equity to see and operationalize what that is. And so to help us know the expectations for our important work, we have drafted a statement for equity and anti-racism. So Scott and I, words matter. So Scott and I are going to read the Equity and Anti-Racism Vision Statement for the West Hartford Public Schools aloud.
We, the members of West Hartford Public Schools, dedicate ourselves to the pursuit of equity.
Equitable schools are those that value and honor all in our community as unique individuals capable of maximizing their true potential.
We make a solemn promise to identify and dismantle all elements of systemic racism and historical inequities.
We vow to clear paths with a relentless duty to those in traditionally marginalized groups.
And we pledge to partner with all families in the service of the success of each child.
So a good vision statement really frames and drives our work toward continuous improvement, but it's also, a slide that you all may not have, is kind of a slide that talks about our definition, and it really just frames, you know, how we arrive at this common understanding and this vision statement, and that is to actively, mindfully identify and oppose cultural messages and dismantle institutional policies, practices, and all systems of advantage and equity based on race.
So in our work, it's important that all who need to carry the work of equity forward understand what equity looks like and how it's actionable. And so as a part of that work, we have not only crafted a vision statement, we've also developed a model, which we hope will help all who are working with us and on behalf of equity to see what equity looks like in practice, and to identify that there are deep bodies of research and there are skills and dispositions which can inform the work. And so what you're looking at is a model which talks to what equity looks like in practice, and each of the areas that educators might borrow and lean on and use as leverage points toward equity, with equity always being at the center and the goal. And so we, again, we want to make sure that we strive for and hold ourselves accountable to the fact that that is always the end game in all that equity represents. And so at the center of that model is equity, and at the center of what is equitable is what impacts the lives of and the performance of, and the ways in which students are all acknowledged, and children are at that heart. So in the work, one of the things that we want to make sure that as we help our colleagues to become more familiar with what equity work looks like as educators, we want to make sure that we acknowledge that these are different times. We started our meeting tonight with a discussion about all that is happening in our world around health and safety. Our staff, our students, all of us are walking in the doors with experiences that are informing who we are each day. So the work is really in acknowledgement of what's happening for students, leaving space for a dialogue about what is in their lives in terms of health, social justice, racial issues, and leaving room for a dialogue that allows people's personal experiences to be a part of that work. And also important in that work, it's an area of equity that we identify as having strong potential, but it's also part of how we believe the work should be done, that we don't do this work in isolation, that this is an effort that's done as a community. And so we reach out to and draw upon the strengths of our families and our community members and our community agencies to help us do the work, help us see how to do that work, and to inform us with all that they know in terms of their strengths, and help them to build the capacities they need to work with us in partnership.
So as Scott highlighted from the earlier slide, students have more in their backpacks than ever before. Our students are situated in a landscape and a climate that together just is unprecedented. And so this year, our district-wide pre-K through 12 program, we're implementing social-emotional learning instruction, or SEL, you may have heard of it, and it's really to help our students and adults to be better able to build self-awareness, to manage emotions during this complex time, and to strengthen relationships with others. Social-emotional learning is a research-based motto. It is supported and endorsed by the Connecticut State Department of Education. We are accountable to them as well, but we do this not because of accountability. We have done it, but this year, we're looking to do, we are doing that, pre-K through 12 with fidelity. And we're very fortunate to have a set of standards and tools developed by the Collaborative for Academic and Social-Emotional Learning that help us to model and teach and hold expectations for students and adults in managing emotions and within the emotional demands of everyday life. And so we also have a set of standards and domains set forth by teaching tolerance. And so I borrowed this bridge as a metaphor from my colleague, Carrie Jones, to help me to do a crosswalk of social-emotional learning and social justice education when we pair them together. And so the standards for social justice education, by that, I just want to clarify that we mean pro-social education. We do not blur lines with politics, and because that's just not within the realm of public education. But then we teach students how to think, we don't teach them what to think. And so we provide them with these skills to become agents of cultural change. And so if you will, as I go through the crosswalk, imagine mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. We built, we look to build self-awareness so that students develop a positive self-concept, their identity, where they feel like they are seen, they are valued, they are heard, and they are supported. That is the mirror. Self-management, being able to understand others, to have empathy, show empathy, that correlates to diversity, and those are the windows. Responsible decision-making. When you make good, responsible decisions, when you're trying to be equitable, you're trying to be fair, we relate that to justice, the justice domain, and pro-social education. And then relationships matter at the root of everything that we do. It's all about relationships. It's where we build trust. And social awareness, having a sense of, we opened with talking about one community, but feeling like you have a place in a community and you feel responsible. And so that's what leads us to action, and it's sliding glass doors. So we do have a framework that we have, that we've adopted. We remain unwavered in that framework, and that's our Cultural Competence Continuum. And essentially, it helps us to take a candid look at ourselves, understand our own identity, but also to recognize our own inherent biases, and we all have that. And when we know better, we try to contextualize it or operationalize that into culturally responsive practice. And so we want everybody to recognize that this framework, and it's essentially understanding our identity and bias and moving toward, moving toward a professional practice for cultural, to be cultural agents in dismantling systemic inequities.
And so along with the Cultural Competence Continuum, we also have tools we're using in this work. This is very different work in some ways for a lot of our educators. I think most of our educators, most of us in this work, come to it activated morally, activated emotionally about what we see for young people. I think most people who enter into education are equitable by nature, but they need to know what to do. And so part of our work really acknowledges that there is research-based tools that we borrowed. The Courageous Conversations Compass is one that's been used by folks like Glenn Singleton over for years to look at issues around equity. We're using this tool purposefully to get people to see that though I may start in a place of moral outrage, it's not where I can end. I need to examine equity from a number of perspectives if I'm going to arrive at a place where I truly understand the circumstances of others, and I reach a place where I know what action looks like. So this is a tool that we're using in a lot of our professional learning work to help people to move around that compass to see more fully what equity looks like.
We're also using it in our classrooms too, with our students. And what I didn't mention is when I said that we're implementing the SEL and social justice education with fidelity, we're offering our students a guaranteed common experience across all grade levels in their morning meeting, in their, at the elementary level, and at the middle school level, it's in the morning advisory, and in the high school, it's in community. And so this is a tool that they are exposed to and helps them, students and adults, to manage our emotions and understand where we're entering and how we're entering certain conversations and difficult topics, and being aware of others too.
So, and likewise, we have not just what the work is, but how to do the work is really important if we're going to do this in a way that is acknowledging that it is challenging work, that we need to hold one another accountable, and we need to do it in a way that's respectful of where people are along that journey. We have a set of norms for children and adults that really look at being respectfully engaged and staying present, and that this is not work that's ever done, it's a journey. Equity is an aspiration, and so if we're really being honest with ourselves, we're continuously examining where we are along that journey. And it's being fair to those who may be in different places and inviting them to take part in the work of equity in a way that is safe, respectful, and that builds people's patience and understanding of one another. So these norms are ones that we're trying to live by in all of that work.
And so essentially, we aim for building capacity in our skills and also developing our dispositions in this work. And so we realize that we're all operating with some beliefs about this important, critical, challenging work. And I love this slide because, you know, after a hard day, in hard times, in complex situations, just in the world around us, this reminds us to have grace with ourselves and with each other, and, you know, and try really hard to do our best. We strive to be equitable educators, and it really is a journey, and there will be, we recognize there will be progress and there will be setbacks. This work really recalls for, calls for us to reflect and be patient with ourselves and each other. And it's okay that we're all in different places. We don't have to be perfect, but we absolutely can't just rely on hope and chance. We really have to make concerted intentional efforts.
And in that form of intention, just one last point, is that one of the things that we're trying to make sure that we get permission for is that people are going to need to do intense self-reflection to do this work. It requires personal reflection to get to professional understanding and to lead to professional dispositions, and that's not easy work. We want to leave room for that and acknowledge that that is important and vital in driving the work.
So to echo Scott's earlier sentiments of gratitude to Superintendent Moore and to the board and our leadership team, our courageous leadership team, you know, we, your support will allow us to commit to goals with a stronger equity lens and to dismantle systemic inequities, but really be intentional and to look for them. We do believe that you all have cleared our paths for us and have supported our work with intention to develop a policy that will, you know, it's not so much that a policy will drive our work, but we believe that a policy will support and protect our work and sustain it as well. So presently, we are working to ensure that we have a common understanding, and so we've reorganized some of our district structures. Scott is a testament to that, sitting here with me, as well as the Equity and Diversity Council. But we're building, you know, school-based equity teams to help us, and so that we are working with a common understanding and we have greater capacity, so that we really want every single member of the West Hartford Public Schools community to have an individual responsibility or ownership and a shared and collective vision.
So this is, this speaks to the idea that we're really trying to build a system for continuous improvement that exists at all levels of the district, that this would be mirrored in both a district-wide Equity and Diversity Council, whose work is to be thought partners with us as members and stakeholders in that work, helping us to think about whether or not we're meeting the expectations we've set for ourselves, holding ourselves accountable, and looking at whether or not we're making the growth that we say that we're trying to achieve. And then having building-based teams where those representatives on the district-wide committee would go back to their home schools and do that same work at each of the schools to look where they are, because each school's in different places, and so they would need to help inform the leadership at that school about where they are in terms of achievement of equity as well. of equity as well.
All right. So, this is our journey toward, you know, more systemic approaches to this work. And we also have a professional learning plan, and the West Harvard Professional Learning Plan outlines our progression of our growth and development and how we will operationalize what we learn and what our expectations are aligned with our vision for equity and anti-racism. Do you want to say anything more here?
I think, again, sort of, I think one of the most important pieces is that we're helping people to recognize what it means to be equitable educators and what it means to be an equitable organization. We have to really call ourselves to task by looking very carefully at what that looks like in practice, what we would expect to see in terms of results. And so, we're helping our educational colleagues to think about what skills they may need, what dispositions they may need, what competencies they might need to be more equitable with students. And I think that's a different perspective, so we're walking people from a definition to looking inward to lead to that place of action. So, we're really trying to be very thoughtful and very, we're, we're using the word intentional, and where educators get to the place where they recognize what this, what equity looks like in practice, they can help us by daily looking for opportunities to move the needle on equity.
Right. And I also want to just give a nod and a thank you to our parent partners in this work. We invited parents into this work and, well, we always have, but we made a concerted effort to reach out to our parents and caregivers from our BIPOC community to join us in this work and those who have been underrepresented traditionally. And so, we're grateful for their partnership. They are giving, providing us feedback on our lessons, on our common experience lessons each day, and helping us to, to pair our work with the parent education that we're doing in collaboration with educators.
So, we wanted to bring it back home to what this is all about. Ultimately, we need to keep children at the center of the work. That's why the model, the equity model, really places children at the center. We have a quote here which we thought really does speak to some of the power of the work and the importance of the work. And the quote is from Dr. Dana Simmons, Assistant Director of Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, also informed a lot of the work of Ruler that we use here in the district. And the quote is, "Every child deserves an education that guarantees the safety to learn in the comfort of one's own skin." So, we really think that captures the essence of why we're here.
And we'll close in the way that we opened the school year with a greeting of the African Maasai, and that is Kasarian Engera. Kasarian Engera means, "And how are the children?" And so, in the African Maasai community, they greet each other with Kasarian Engera, "How are the children?", where we say, "Good morning, how are you?" They concern themselves with their future generation because they really believe that by nurturing and by ensuring the well-being of their children, that is the, that is the pathway to prosperity for their community. And so, the response in English is, "And all of the children are well." And so, it doesn't mean that children don't have productive struggle, but they are in good hands in our community.
So, thank you very much.
So, with that, we'll open the floor for any questions and discussion.
Wow, thank you so much. I know we're going off to discussion, and so, I'll look to my colleagues. Ari?
I just first wanted to recognize-
And I'll just remind you about your microphone.
I know. I'm adjusting. Rosina, I just wanted to kind of recognize, you know, your longstanding and ongoing commitment to equity and anti-racism within our community, and Scott, I want to welcome you. I'm really excited what the two of you can do to further this, this mission and cause. I just keep thinking Dynamic Duo. I don't know why, but I just, that's really the thought that keeps coming to my mind when I hear more about where you're headed. I really just wanted to make more of a comment. When I look at kind of the plan that you put in place, the Venn diagram, I think the piece that really sets it apart from other equity and anti-racist racism programs or plans is that family involvement. I think it really recognizes the fact that children don't exist in isolation and in a vacuum. Family engagement is really the key to creating any kind of meaningful and longstanding change. So, I think, you know, the work that you've been doing, the work that you continue to do, I think the key is really developing that trusting, maintaining this trusting and supportive relationship with the children, but also with their families. I think that that's key, and I, I just, I want to recognize that I think that that is really something that sets the district and your plan apart from others that I have seen. So, I just want to kind of applaud you for that, for that piece, as well as the others, but I think it's a key piece that sets yours apart.
So, I think I have the pleasure of being the longest-standing board member when this was first implemented, and I remember talking to Tom about it, the board in, in general, and, you know, there couldn't have been more agreement about this position, and, and there couldn't have been a better person to lead it. And we've only seen good things come out of this. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I think when this was first developed, we were the model, the first in Connecticut, right? And, you know, so, I say that out loud for both people at home and in this room that haven't been part of it that long. So, we really, in West Harvard, have, to use a military term, like kind of the tip of the spear, right out in front, always, and, and in continuous improvement model as well. We've just always been a leader in this, you know, I always talk about sometimes, and I'll digress a little, be a leader or follower. And sometimes you don't always have to be a leader, and sometimes you have to follow to get results, but this is a pure example of where we led by example, and those efforts have been noticed by many, and the, the results are only going to be beneficial as the future goes on. So, I couldn't have been happier, honestly. I knew it right from the beginning, this was going to be a win-win, and I'm just glad that I'm still here to see it go through the fruition from the beginning and evolve as it has, so, and welcome.
Thank you.
Scott as well, so, appreciate it.
Thanks for your support, Mark.
I just want to acknowledge that, Mark, yes, you are the longest-serving-
That's what you got out of that?
What I want to acknowledge is the lack of politicization of, of, of this anti-racism initiative among our school system and our board of education. And so, I just wanted to give a shout-out to all who have been involved over the last couple of years, who are involved presently and in the future, for having us come together in a non-partisan way to try to promote what we know is best for our children and our families, and to promote equity and social justice. So, thank you for that. Other questions? Jason?
Thank you for this presentation. I'm struck by how, how detailed your plan is for both describing, what, what does equity look like? How do you, how do you teach equity? How do you practice equity? And, and, and the ways, like to echo what Ari is saying, the way that you integrate the community into that process, I think is really important because there are, now we see a number of institutions now have decided that they're anti-racist, and they've adopted something that doesn't come from their community. And when that happens, there's a, a change of values, and having, having community participation in this ensures that, that those feedback loops, as you were saying, Scott, you know, over time, develop the kind of, that should validate what because of their experiences within the school. We know it's equitable because they're included, and, and we understand their, their role. So, I think that's a really important part of, of how to, how to define equity is also not just by stage, but by process. And, and so, I'm, I'd like to, you know, ask a little bit further about, about the plans to evaluate the district's progress. And, you know, like I know that this is, you know, we're in the planning stages, but in that process, have you thought about how will you, what, what, what are the key kinds of benchmarks or things that, things that we would want to matter not just now, but in 10 years, in, in 15, 20 years? Because, you know, from where I sit, I, you know, now being a part of the board and also teaching at UConn, I see education in Connecticut over 20 years, and when, you know, and to see students that may come through this district and then go to college, you know, I, I think about, you know, what are those things that, that they're going to take with them? And, and so, I, I know that, that, that the outcomes will be in process, but, but I'd like to understand your thinking around evaluating the district's progress, and, you know, there's, some folks have talked about equity audits, and if that, how that thinking has informed your planning and, and other kinds of, you know, internal assessments.
I'll start. You can shame in. And so, you know, just more clearly, our plan is to, one, acknowledge, right? To acknowledge our shortcomings, to acknowledge all of the inequities and disparities, and we're frustrated by persistent disparities in and among racial groups. The other piece of it is making that commitment for change, and the, the critical part of that also is evaluation. And an evaluation and accountability system that is transparent, measurable. So, we are, we're, we're looking at baseline data, a lot of it that, you know, it's not new to us, and unfortunately, those disparities continue to persist over time. And so, we want to make sure that we are, we have a collective set of, a collective agreement on goals and outcomes before we can move into an equity audit. We've had so many, we've looked at so many proposals, so many research questions and inquiries, and so, we really want to involve and engage all of our constituents in looking at, you know, what are our priorities? What are the goals? What are we seeking to answer and address? What outcomes do we want? We know student achievement, and then there are things that we know that we have the capacity to really investigate and research ourselves from within, and we have an understanding that there are, you know, inequities, systemic inequities in practices that, you know, it would be more appropriate to consult with, you know, an outside researcher or institute. So, you know, that's where we are right now, looking at some approaches that have been used. So, to Mark's point, I remember at a previous presentation, Mark said, "Don't give away, you know, all of our, all of our intellectual property," because we get, we get calls across the state, at one time it was across the nation, asking to consult with us. One of the things we started thinking about doing is maybe forming a network with those organizations that are consulting with us, and maybe having an exchange, kind of like the NIESC accreditation process, where we can do an equity audit, partner with someone else to do an equity audit. So, we do have other districts that might be interested in doing that as well.
I guess I would add just, first of all, thank you for the acknowledgement around process and how much that matters. Part of my background comes from social sciences world, and so, I think qualitative pieces often get missed. It's one thing to look at survey results in the shape of a curve, sorry, Mr. Visinus, but it's another thing to talk with human beings and to ask them, I know, that wounds you deeply, but I do think, in not being glib, I think it's an important part of that, whatever metrics we, we end up with, that we involve conversations with kids, conversations with families about where we are in terms of, again, it seems like a soft, kind of a data point, but trust, relational trust, I think it's a vital piece of the work, especially around the work of equity and anti-racism. Where are we with our community? I think if we don't involve families, if we don't involve children in informing us as to whether or not we are making them see, to be all seen and heard and valued, we are missing something pretty vital. And there is some hard research behind that. People like, you know, Anthony Bright out of University of Chicago have pointed to relational trust driving the needle on achievement. So, it's not just about, you know, sort of soft data. So, I think that process piece matters as much as, you know, some of the traditional metrics, I think we need to look at involving stakeholders in the work and pushing on us to make sure that we're thinking about it in a more rounded and a, you know, three-dimensional way.
If I could just follow up and just ask, you know, when, when you guys are thinking about process and network forming, and, and I'm, I'm curious to hear from you, other things that you think the board could, could develop or could support that work, as, you guys are the ones in, you know, tuning the clock. So, I, you know, I'd really, you know, encourage to think about how, how, how the board can support that work, and, you know, really curious to see how, how to, how to refine that and, and support the process.
And we would say the very first thing we would ask is for the board to stand by and support our vision statement for equity and anti-racism.
Thank you very much, and welcome again.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that you have this so rather important in terms of a community educator who shares this critique on how to think versus what to think. What are your thoughts if, let's say, with the work that's being done, you come across a colleague or maybe a family, you know, of a family, where this is just something that they're not into, what's in education, is? How will you respond to someone who is not invested in this work? Who is within our school system?
I don't mean taking a first stab, if you don't mind. I think that the way in which we have built this model speaks to what we prioritize, which is children at the center around equitable outcomes. So, it's pretty hard to refute when we're asked that it's important that all children be achieving at a level that is their, represents their maximum potential, regardless of who those children are. And when we see data that points to the fact that we don't have that right now, it's not blaming people, it's not pointing fingers, this is not about who's at fault. I think it's about building systems that strive for results, that are more equitable results. And so, I, I love that the comment was asked, or the question was asked about politics. This is not a political issue, this is about what is morally correct for all children, and, and we have a charge. So, I think that's where we would come from, is the place of a moral obligation for all kids. That would be my answer.
No, and I think that's great, and I want to, Rosina, you can finish up, but I want to jump in with one piece, because you asked the question, one of the questions, that's the, that's such a key, important question. We have 1,500 employees, because not just teachers, it's everybody that is around kids. And it's really important that we hire the right people. It's really important that we train people properly. It's really important the conversations we had have, and this is really hard work, because an initial discussion with somebody about this topic, a reaction that every one of us that's been a principal or dealt with people is, "Are you calling me a racist?" And it's about, "No, but we need to talk about what's perception, how does this go?" And these are conversations that we need to have. And Rosina, Scott, thought leaders at our schools, besides just principals, because sometimes the best messenger is a colleague, and, and we urge colleagues, because sometimes people will come to us and say- And we urge colleagues, because sometimes people come to us and say, I think this about this, or I heard this. And it's, well, have you spoken to that person, the colleague, about how that made you feel? And we will if we have to, if there's reason. But I want to say one other piece, and then Rosina will say something nicer. But I want to say this and make it clear. I've said this directly at convocation to all staff. I've said it to people in meetings, with Rick and I, and with the meeting. This is the direction of this district. These are the core values of this district. If you don't believe in these core values and you can't work under these core values, this is the wrong place for you to be. Now, that's not the first conversation you have with somebody. That's way down the road. But it is that kind of conception that we all have to understand what West Hartford stands for. You know, that is something that's really important to me, that we make it clear in our statement, that we make the moral reason, the child, the clarity of that statement, that this isn't about you, this is about the child. That, just keep going back to that over and over and making sure people understand that. I think that's a really important part of this conversation and training, too.
We, you have made it very clear. You've opened the door, and you've made it very clear on where we stand in this work and for our schools to be more equitable, inclusive and socially just. And so we just won't compromise on that. But we recognize that we have, there are conversations that we have to have, and that's why we said we have tools, and then we have some resources that we will try. Because we are, I had a parent say, just don't forget that you're an educational organization. It is your charge and your job to educate others and members of the community. I'd hate to miss the opportunity because we didn't make it clear and we didn't, somehow we had a misstep in that communication, that we turned somebody away or we lost someone and they didn't understand our mission and our vision.
And, you know, I live in this community, and a question that someone once asked me as an early educator was, how would, would these results be okay if it was your child? I think that we need to remind ourselves that every child that walks our door is someone's child. And is this good enough for that child, whether it's your child or whether that child is in your care for the six hours that you have them during the day? I think that's pretty hard to walk away from.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And so appreciate the candor and the realness of it, because as aspirational as this is, we certainly know there are going to be some challenges, and we certainly know there are going to be some who will not embrace that. I say that as a board member, and I say that as a parent here in West Hartford, who years ago recalls someone, a child saying to my child that they didn't want to play with them because of the color of their skin, and they learned that from their mother because of things their mother said. So that's the reality, that as embracing as our town is, we do have some pockets where some are not as open. And so glad to know that there's a vigilant stance that we're taking to educate others. So even if that education is not coming within the home, it's going to come from within the school. So thank you, definitely glad this is happening and certainly want to support it moving forward.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Amanda?
Hi, I just, you asked, as one of the things that would be most helpful is to have our support. So I just want to be clear that not only do I support this work, but I'm really excited about it. I think that this is something that I've had experience over the years as a teacher doing some of these pieces. And one, my kids loved what we were doing when it came to the curriculum. It was always stimulating and exciting and expanded their thinking in ways that I see in their lives now, because I keep in touch with many of them, they're now in their third, you know, late twenties, early thirties. And when we think about what this is going to mean for our district, it's very exciting because not only are we able to, well, I don't know how the rest of us approach our work here, but one of the things that I do is I picture kneeling down in front of every single one of our kids and looking that child in the eye and being able to say to him or her, or the, am I doing right by you? I hope I'm doing right by you. And that means a lot of things, you know, especially saying it right now as we think about the times that we're making decisions in. And I think that a lot of this work is going to continue to be, as this statement says, in service of the child. The other thing is that for people who have already been involved with this work over the summer, there's some really special things happening in our community that we've, people are meeting each other in ways they haven't met before. There are so many different working groups that have come together to collaborate. Their leaders, like thinking about Tricia and Nikia and Yukio and Gigi and all the wonderful people, Earl over at Wasco, all of the people that are working on this in very significant deep ways are also bringing us information about other things that we need to be aware of as it relates to just general school operations. So we're expanding the relationships of people who just know each other in the community and understand each other's lives, and we're getting a lot of good work done. And I think that that's a really special thing. But what also happens when you look at an anti-racist organization or learning work, you start getting a level of critical thinking skills when it comes to thinking in terms of systems. That is so exciting because it forces you to learn at a whole nother level. So when we talk about when kids take AP classes and why we want them to take that, sometimes it's because we want them to know what it feels like to learn in a way that is much harder and to think in a way that is more challenging, and it feels really good. Maybe not at the beginning, but it feels good to challenge yourself and learn that way. And when I look over at Lily and Rashil, thinking about this year and coming up in your education, as you start digging in and thinking critically about systems, I can't even imagine the value that you will bring to your chosen fields when you go out into the world and you're the person sitting there saying, have you thought about this? What do we need to learn more about? Have you asked this person? You know, just the training that comes from learning how to think is so valuable. And I think when we look at the reason why our district continues to be an award-winning district, it's because a lot of this kind of work has already been started. So to take a deliberate look at deepening it is only going to mean good things, not just for people in our community and our children and our schools, but it's going to help bring our community together in a way that is really very significant in a time when, you know, most of us are kind of moving a little further apart from one another in ways. It's a really nice thing to get to know your community on a whole nother level. So for people who might not have been introduced to this work before, I just encourage you to become part of the process in a way, even if it's just attending something on Zoom, there's a lot of meetings going on. I'm seeing this work at the New Britain Museum of American Art where I'm a docent. I'll be 44 on Saturday, and I'm the youngest docent by a lot, which my kids love to tease me about. And we're doing this as an institution, and so our entire learning plan, three quarters of the year is dedicated to this kind of work. And imagine how exciting it is at someone at my age to see seniors who have been leaders in our community in all kinds of industries, digging in and learning about this in a new way. And it's been very exciting. So for people who haven't been close to this work before, I hope that you will be part of the process and join us in this learning, because I think you will find it to be very, very satisfying. You will meet a lot of new people, and you'll also be part of solidifying this vision for our district, which is going to have incredible results for our children, our communities, and then everywhere that they go. So I'm really excited about the work that we have and am ready to dig in meaningfully to it. Oh, thank you.
Hope that we are doing right by you. We will.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to routine matters, and we have item A, approval of the minutes. And I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes from the October 6th, 2020 Regular Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion?
I moved.
Amanda, and seconded by Ari. Is there discussion? Mark?
I don't know the appropriateness, but if, you know, I was in attendance via video and phones, I don't know if you have to annotate that or not. If not, then it's fine.
I think you were present, and we don't have a way to indicate that in the minutes.
I can check, because there was a meeting a couple of years ago, he did that. I'll, Laura, check that, it's a good point. I'm definitely present, I just don't know if there's something in parentheses.
Okay, so we'll make a note of that. Thank you.
Do you mean we need, because it says present up top, do you mean whether or not we need to clarify if it was remote or not?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know that we've had that situation before.
Well, Tom says we have.
We have? Okay.
This board hasn't, but it's happened in the past where people have called in.
Actually, I called in.
You've called in before.
Yep.
So that's what I was thinking, so we can go back and check that.
Okay. Thank you, because that's going to come up, I'm sure, for most of us.
It was in March of 2019, I think.
March, I can't remember.
Believe it or not, I can tell you what I had for dinner that night, too. So with that notation, are there any other comments on the minutes? If not, I'll try your minds. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving on to information and reports, board members, communications and reports. Are there any reports from other boards and organizations?
No.
Okay. Any other information and discussion? Moving on to non-staff communications and reports, we have the reports from our student board representatives, and we'll start with Rashil tonight.
So I'm first going to report on the curriculum night that happened last Wednesday at Conard. I think the overall response from the parents was very positive, and the whole curriculum night was a pretty big success considering the situation that we're in. I think parents in general were extremely impressed sort of by the time and the hard work the teachers spent in creating the videos and staying on for the Google meets. And I think that, I think a lot of this year, at least from the parents, has been focused more on how school's going to work in terms of the hybrid model, the block scheduling, the online. And I think the curriculum night really helped in terms of knowing what students are actually learning in the classroom and less about like the logistics of how school is going to work. And I think the curriculum night was really important in that regard. The PSAT happened last Wednesday, and there was high participation for the juniors and sophomores who took it. The athletics are going well, and they're up and running. And then Conard's black box is also having, are doing outside rehearsals and are having a performance. And it's really just limited to the family members of the students participating, but I think it's really great, given the circumstances that we're in, that we're still able to have shows go on. I think also, I think even based off today's meeting, I would also like to report on how the community block has been going. I think the overall response from students is that it's been very positive and enjoyable. I think that given the current situation that we're in and all the stress that's sort of going on with the COVID, I think that this really is a great opportunity for students to really sort of share how they're feeling. I think school is really great in that it allows for students to see and observe different backgrounds outside of the spheres of their family and very close friends. And the community block, I think, really takes advantage of like seeing the different people in our community and the different backgrounds in which people come from. I think it's also a great place to sort of, and I really enjoyed the discussions regarding sort of the self-awareness and how we're feeling. And I think sort of given the situ, or sort of given like how it's pretty, lots of like hustle and sort of bustle that students typically face, I think the community block has done a pretty good job of sort of slowing down and sort of making sure how, making students feel self-aware in terms of how they are emotionally. And I think in sort of, in terms of my experience, my community block has been in a study hall. And like study halls in general are pretty sort of independent and like students are just focused on themselves and that sort of thing. And despite that sort of environment that you get from a study hall, I think my classmates in that study hall were very open to sharing and have these conversations, even though study hall is a time where students really take to spend to themselves. And I think, I think that the community block has been really beneficial in that regard.
So I'll just begin where Rashil left off with talking about community. I'd say admittedly, the first few community classes were definitely uncomfortable, but that's a pretty big aspect of the community block and its purpose is to kind of talk about topics that may be uncomfortable for some people, but as they've progressed, it's definitely gotten easier to have these very important discussions. We've mostly been focused on the theme of identity, and we discuss our personal identities, what we're confident about, about ourselves, what we may not be so confident about, and how our identities fit into our culture, our school and our town. And we've also learned how to be effective listeners and communicators when we're having these tough conversations. Also, a lot of things that have been happening at Conard have been happening at Hall as well. So our Black Box Theater is also having its first outdoor socially-distanced play, which is called All in the Timing, and its performance is this Friday. It's outside, but the audience is limited to those invited by the actors and the crew. Progress reports were due two Fridays ago, which marks the halfway point of the quarter, so the students should be receiving those soon. Picture Day will occur tomorrow and Thursday for the blue group, and next Monday and Tuesday for the red group. Today was supposed to be the first day for school pictures, but there were technical difficulties, so it was canceled. We also had our curriculum night last week, and I think it was, it was definitely an good opportunity to have the parents do that online, because it was kind of like they got to have, they got to live kind of like a day in the life of a student online, going to all the different Google meets. And I think they kind of got to see what our daily life is like just by having them online and doing Google meets in the Google classrooms like we do every day. And Safe Grad fundraising has begun for the class of 2021. And although we don't really know what the future months will hold, how the Safe Grad Party will turn out, the planning committee has remained really flexible and is continuing to fundraise in a lot of different ways, such as our flocking, kind of the iconic Safe Grad fundraiser. There's a clothing drive, a bottle and can drive, and also events at local restaurants. The one that's upcoming is the Safe Grad Night at Blue Plate Kitchen this Friday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., in which 10% of the proceeds will go to Safe Grad.
Future business, announcement of future meeting dates. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 4th, which is, we're meeting on Wednesday because the election is the day before. I'd just like to say that out loud. I believe we will likely still be in this room. I'm not sure the legislative chamber will be available yet, but we will check on that. And then after that, our meeting after that is Tuesday, November 17th. Again, location to be determined. Are there requests for future agenda items? If not, comments from visitors. I believe we do have one person still on the line reading to provide public comment.
Yes, my name is Jack, I'm back here in West Hartford. I got on the call a little bit late, and that's the beginning period of talking about the kids going back to school. I just wanted to make some comments on that. I have four children in the West Hartford school system now, one doing at-home learning, and three in the hybrid system, one in the elementary, two in the middle schools. I see the kids going to the elementary school, all the kids going back in, with them being mainly in one class all day. With the middle and the high school kids, there's really no way for them to be socially distancing at all. You know, I see the kids at sports games, not necessarily social distancing, the parents, you know, many parents are still having parties, going out, having a good time, and not adhering to any safety precautions. You know, yes, we haven't seen any kids spread COVID-19 in school, but it's popping up a lot in kids at school these days, and it's just a matter of time till it starts to spread in there, too. You know, this is putting, you know, the kids at risk, the parents at risk, other family members at risk, businesses at risk, other employees at risk. That's completely unnecessary, that these kids should stay in the hybrid system. You know, this is not over, it's going up, getting worse, you know, the test results today. You know, the test results today, we're at 3%. It's getting worse. And frankly, I'm not quite sure how we expect our kids to be able to socially distance and adhere to these rules, when the state doesn't even believe the state employees can do that. Employees, state employees are not in work yet, they don't go to the office. I'm not quite sure how we can expect the kids to do the same. You know, the state seems to put the kids at the second-tier level over the employees. So I'm not quite sure how this works, and I really, from a lot of parents I've talked to, you know, really ask that the kids stay in the hybrid model and not go back in full time for the middle and high school kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have it. I don't believe there's anyone else on the call waiting to provide comment. We do not have executive session, and so I am seeking a motion to adjourn. Lorna, and seconded by Liz. Meeting is adjourned at 8:44. Thank you, everybody.